Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's the regular Planning Commission meeting of September 15th, 2021. Can we have a flag salute? Please join Commissioner Ruiz.
Yes, thank you. Please, I place your right hand over your heart and join me in a salute to the flag. Ready? Begin.
A flag to the regions, to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hagel?
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Commissioner Telesio?
Hold on. Okay, I'm here.
Chairman Watts?
Here.
And Commissioner Trejo has an excused absence, so we have four commissioners present.
Thank you. We have a public comment period. So far, every public comment that I've seen is related to one of the agenda items. Do we have any public comments that are not related to an agenda item?
We have none that are not related to an agenda item.
Okay, going once, going twice, gone. Okay, I will skip that section then, since we have no public comments here. Is that okay, Counselor?
Yes, that's fine.
Good move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action, and I have had no such requests. So with that...
I'll move the item.
Items to move by Commissioner Ruiz, second item by Commissioner Telesio. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And so four to zero vote. Thank you. Move on to the business, and we have a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the Planning Commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the Commission's Secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission may file an appeal of the Commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form, and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. Our first item tonight is item number two, long-range planning project number LR18-1620, our 2021-2029 housing element update, which is our sixth cycle and an update to the public safety element. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, we'll be covering two topics. We'll be, first, covering the update to the public safety element, which is a very small update, and then we'll be covering the comprehensive update to our 2021-2029 housing element. We're gonna break the presentation into two sections. We're gonna pause after we work on the public safety element, and then we'll pause again once we've done the housing element. The public safety element presentation's very, very short, but we wanna get right into it and allow that time to ask those questions. So for the public safety element, what we're doing for this is, we're gonna be in compliance with recent state law changes that require us to update the public safety element. These changes include SB 99 analysis, which is essentially evacuation route analysis. We have to update policies to address extreme weather events, hotter conditions, more fires, et cetera, and we also need to reference the county hazard mitigation plan, as well as the city's local hazard mitigation plan. We're anticipating that this item will also be going before the California Board of Forestry and Fire Protection on September 21st, 2021. And just to let you know, this isn't the last update we'll be doing for our public safety element. We do expect a more comprehensive and detailed update with our comprehensive general plan update that we are commencing in the next few years. And with that, are there any questions on the public safety element?
Commissioner Hagel?
Is any of these changes in response to the number wildfires that we've had?
Absolutely. High fire hazard mitigation zones that are within the city are one of the reasons that these changes are in place.
Thank you.
You know, just a quick aside comment to pass on. With the fire concerns and the fire danger, it's made me look at a different, through a different lens, at the potential fires, and it seems to me that this city is loaded with palm trees that are just loaded and ready to burn, and I know the fire department knows that. Whatever we could do to help with that problem, I think would be appropriate, and certainly not as a commission here. That's just an aside, as I said, if you could pass that on. Just a concern, I mean, it's common sense, I'm sure everybody sees it, but something people need to take care of, I guess, if they have a palm tree like that, so.
Definitely can note that.
Yeah. Questions, staff? Okay. No questions, I will open the public hearing.
I believe we need to still hear the rest of the presentation, so that was the public safety element.
We're just doing public safety element. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
All right. So now, I'm gonna transition over to Amanda, who's our consultant for the housing element, and then I'll see you at the end of the presentation, so she's gonna take care of this part of
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Amanda Tropiano, a principal with De novo Planning Group, excited to be working with the City of Temecula on your housing element update. Brandon got the easy end of this presentation, quite short. My presentation's a bit longer, but I hope to explain in detail this really important piece of policy document that the city is going to use to guide its discussion related to housing over the next eight years. So, housing elements in the state of California are a required component of every city and county's general plan. Housing elements were made part of the local planning effort back in 1969, a little before my time, under Governor Ronald Reagan, and that really started the responsibility for cities to plan for future housing needs of current and future residents. So, housing and housing elements have been around for a lot of, many years, but there's been considerable change from 1969 to what we are responsible for addressing as part of your housing element today, and we'll talk about some of those key, key changes. And in particular, housing element law continues to evolve, and in particular, the last several years have resulted in a number of new pieces of legislation that are folded into the way a city addresses its housing element. So, the city of Temecula's very first housing element was adopted in 1993, and it's been updated several times since, in accordance with state law. It was updated in 2002, 2010, and again in 2014. This is the sixth cycle of housing elements in the state of California. So, we sometimes call this the 2021 to 2029 update, or the sixth cycle update. That means that there have been six rounds of housing elements under housing law, and it really focuses on a number of topics related to existing and future housing needs, and is really, a key component of this is describing the way that cities plan to accommodate new growth in coordination with their regional fair share, and I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about that. So, every city and county in California is assigned a numerical value of housing units that it is expected to accommodate through land use and zoning laws that helps set the stage for future development over the planning period, and again, we're in the sixth cycle planning period, 2021 to 2029. So, we're gonna spend a few minutes talking about how those units are actually assigned to the city of Temecula. So, first, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, sometimes referred to as HCD. HCD calculates based on socioeconomic information, information from the Department of Finance, and various other sources, something that they call the fair share of regional housing needs for each metropolitan planning organization or region in the state. So, it starts at the top. If you think about the top of the pyramid, the state of California, HCD establishes a total amount of housing units that need to be accommodated, and then they assign those to each regional entity. This calculation, again, is for an eight-year planning period. Then, the regional entity, so down here in Southern California, most jurisdictions are responding to allocations provided by the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. So, the regional entity develops a methodology or formula that they use to distribute the units that were provided to them by the state. So, at the top of the pyramid is HCD, that goes down to SCAG, and then SCAG decides how to distribute its units among its member agencies. So, here in Temecula, SCAG provides that allocation. The methodology or the formula that SCAG uses to assign units to each individual agency includes a lot of factors, and is reviewed and approved by the state of California. And in this planning period, SCAG looked at things like socioeconomic information, population trends, household income, home prices, commute patterns, and other components such as access to transit, access to jobs, and other sorts of relationships between jobs and housing. That output, or the assignment, to each agency is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or your RENA. So, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call it the RENA for the rest of the presentation. In this cycle, it should be noted that the state, as well as SCAG, ran into some challenges in completing their responsibilities in developing and assigning those units that resulted in approximately a six-month delay. However, we've worked hard with your community and with your staff to prepare and present a housing element in accordance with the original guidelines and, and schedule. So, once the city or county, like the city of Temecula, is assigned its RENA, then the city's responsibility is to demonstrate to the state that it has the available land to accommodate its RENA at the appropriate densities and intensities to allow for the private market to develop housing over the course of that eight-year planning period. And these RENA numbers are updated, as you can imagine, every eight years, so, eight years from now, you will receive a new assignment for your seventh cycle, but right now, we're just here talking about what's happening between 2021 and 2029. So, just to recap, the state provides each region an assignment that's provided to SCAG here at the local level, that is distributed to its agencies, and the city is responsible for accommodating, accommodating that allocation. This process has been ongoing for, for a number of months and years. We are closing in on the home stretch here. The work began with understanding the final allocation from the Southern California Association of Governments and conducting public outreach to receive input from the community on their housing priorities. We reviewed existing conditions, the success of existing plans and programs, and conducted a virtual workshop, and prepared a public draft housing element that we are presenting to you tonight. So, through a series of public hearings with the Planning Commission and the City Council, we will be adopting an updated housing element, and then sending that to HCD for their review and comment. So, we wanted to spend some time talking about how that public input we received, especially through the early efforts at the virtual workshop and online surveys, which we'll, we'll talk more about at the end of the presentation, but we wanted to really connect the dots about how this input we received is reflected in some of the topics we're gonna be talking about tonight. So, these are some broad categories that we heard from the community at those early meetings about what was important to them when thinking about housing in Temecula. So, one of the comments that we heard was that there was a desire to own a home in Temecula, but they couldn't afford one, either due to the ability to prepare an adequate down payment, or the monthly housing costs associated with homeownership. We've prepared specific goals, policies, and programs to promote the role of homeownership in the community, and reduce the housing costs associated both with the purchase price, as well as the ongoing costs associated with homeownership. We also heard that existing homes are generally in good condition, but, like many homes, need general maintenance, and that support in accomplishing that maintenance would be beneficial. So, again, goals, policies, and programs, specifically those listed here to preserve the city's existing housing stock, and support your existing homeowners and tenants with maintaining a quality housing supply, is also reflected in the housing element. There's also a desire to see a variety of home types, including everything from senior homes, to single-family homes, to mixed-use development throughout Temecula, and there are goals, policies, and programs identified to encourage the diversity of housing options, in particular, to serve the needs of the community through the missing middle housing, which we're gonna spend a few minutes talking about a little bit later. And then, there was also some concerns related to the role that new housing may play in affecting traffic or infrastructure constraints, and some opinions that, in general, Temecula maybe is done growing, and shouldn't plan for any more housing. However, the existing general plan land use designations have been already approved, and they have a legal right to develop in accordance with your already-approved general plan and zoning code. No new sites for new growth or development outside of those already entitled for residential development have been included in this housing element. It's really just a summary and a reflection of your existing capacity. And, pointillingly, state law really prohibits any form of housing moratorium, or the removal of units from your existing inventory, under some special provisions referred to as no net loss. So, thinking about how we're gonna tackle the topic of housing in Temecula really starts with an assessment of trends and understanding where, where we're gonna be headed in the future. So, from 2000 to 2018, Temecula grew at a growth rate of approximately 4%, significantly higher than the rest of Riverside County. Most of that growth has occurred about 20 years ago, in the early 2000s, but the cities continue, continue to see growth even through today. Temecula has generally a lower percentage of renters than compared to the rest of the Southern California region, meaning more of your residents are homeowners and owner-occupied units, but those that are renters tend to be newer residents, looking for an opportunity to move and live in Temecula, maybe for the first time, before purchasing a home, they take the opportunity to, to rent. The city's housing stock is primarily comprised of single-family detached units, and it's weighted more heavily towards that housing type than the rest of the Southern California region. Most of the home types are otherwise generally consistent with what's seen in Southern California, and the city continues to add a variety of home types to its inventory. So, it has continued to add single-family homes, as well as single-family attached homes, multifamily homes, or mixed-use development. The city's vacancy rate is generally on par with the region, looking somewhere around 5.5%, which is considered pretty healthy. Some vacancy is expected, as people move in and move out of their homes, and the average household size is just over three people, again, largely reflective of the region as a whole. However, the vacancy rate for rental units is a little higher than the region, but that has some intricacies to do with the types of residents and seasonal homes or part-time homes that some community members here in Temecula occupy. And home prices here in Temecula, as I'm sure I'm speaking to an audience that's familiar with this, have continued to rise. Temecula is a wonderful place to call home, and your home prices have continued to reflect that. Over the past 10 years, home prices have had a really strong upward trend, generally in line with what was seen in the rest of Riverside County, although, although higher at every year. And in 2020, the median home price in Temecula was approximately $500,000, 22% higher than the county of Riverside. I'm thinking about what it takes to afford a home like that. A household needs to make approximately $125,000 a year, or if you break that down hourly, $62 an hour, to afford that type of home price, and that's assuming all the standard variables, like 20, putting 20% down, and standard ratios for homeownership costs. Now, comparing that back 10 years ago to 2011, a household here in Temecula only needed to make approximately $97,000, and this is, of course, inflation-adjusted, per year to afford the median household price, so it's becoming more expensive to live here. The median household price back in 2011 was approximately $312,000. Rents are also getting more expensive. We are at the peak of rental rates. As of July 2020, the average rent for an apartment in Temecula was just over $2,000, and that is 14% more than it was this time in 2019. Rental rates for all unit sizes are, are rising, and again, we are basically at a 10-year peak. More than a quarter of Temecula's households spend more than half of their income on housing. That's, that's a lot. So, what we're, what we're seeing from these trends is that housing costs here are expensive, and, and it's really in every, every arena, every type of home, rental and homeownership. So, how does the city tackle this, and what's its role in terms of planning for housing in the region? So, Temecula has received its RENA from SCAG, and again, like we discussed, the city's obligation is to show that there is enough land appropriately zoned to accommodate that RENA. The RENA is not just a single one number, it's also broken down into annual income levels, so it's not just that you need to plan for a certain number of households for anyone, it's that you need to plan for a certain number of households based on household incomes, and those are determined by the state and federal governments. So, based generally on a family of four household, the very low-income category, which equates to earn households that earn approximately 50, up to 50% of the area median income, those are households earning up to about $37,650, or $19 an hour. Low-income households earn 51 to 80% of the area median income, about $37,600 to $60,250, about $31 an hour, and again, these are household incomes. The moderate-income category earns 81% to 120% of the area median income, about $60,000 to $90,000, which is up to about $46 an hour, and then those households earning the above-moderate income are those that earn 120% or more of the area median income, which would be on that upper end, $90,000 or more a year, or about $46 an hour or more. So, who, who is served by workforce or affordable housing? So, just to dive into this a little bit deeper, so, looking back at those trends we just talked about, so a very low-income household that is earning 50% of the area median income are up to about $37,650 a year, that's about $19 an hour, so you can see here on the screen just some real-world practical examples of who, who, who earns these types of incomes. That's a preschool teacher, or a house worker, or someone working at our local grocery store. Low-income households earning up to 50 to 80% of the area median income are about $31 an hour. These are, really range, a variety of households earning an income similar to this. Petty officer third class with a housing allowance is earning about $23 an hour, starting teacher salaries, initial firefighters, even restaurant managers or resident physicians, all earning somewhere in that bracket. And then, looking at the moderate-income households earning about 100, up to 120% or $46 an hour, we're looking at a trainee for a deputy sheriff, a second lieutenant with a housing assistance, or accountant, some, some entry-level professionals. So, these are people that you're interacting with on a daily basis. These are people in your community that are serving the needs of your residents every day. So, diving into the numbers a little bit more, Temecula's state-mandated RENA for this planning period is 4,193 units. Approximately half of these units are dedicated to planning for those households that are earning the very low or low-income household categories. So, as you can see on the screen here, approximately 1,359 assigned to the very-low-income household category, 800 to low, 778 to moderate income, and 1,255 to above-moderate income households. So, what types of housing are available, and how do we tackle this, this challenge? So, first, the city of Temecula in and of itself, the city does not build housing. Again, the city's responsibility is to provide for adequate land appropriately designated in its general plan and zoned in its zoning code to facilitate the private market building housing. So, public funds may certainly be used as an incentive to adopt affordable housing restrictions on private development, such as covenants for periods of 55 years, but ultimately, it is the private market that does pursue private activities and develop housing at all income levels. So, the city sets the stage, housing developers build those projects consistent with the city's general plan and zoning code. And housing comes in all different shapes and sizes, everything from detached, single-family homes, all the way up to mid-rise homes or apartments. Different people wanna live in different types of houses in different points of their life, and I think we could all appreciate that we've had personal preferences and wanted to live in different places at different points of our life as well. Communities that offer a variety of home types really help meet that unique need of their residents. Also, by providing a variety of home types, the city can help support your major employers by allowing for their workers to have choices in how and where they live. So, using the opportunity to expand the city's housing stock and expand the range of housing choices is really a mutually beneficial relationship with your, with your business community as well. On the screen are just some examples of what different home types look like, accessory dwelling units, smaller homes, and detached, single-family homes, multifamily homes, mixed-use homes. Temecula has it all, and is continuing to plan to accommodate a range of housing choices. Also, different types of affordability levels can look really similar. So, the two images shown on the screen show a project that is affordable workforce housing, and another that's market rate, and they look pretty indistinguishable. So, working with great developers and working with a, you know, through the public process to develop these projects, you can really get some wonderful examples of workforce or affordable housing. So, I wanted to spend another minute talking about the same exhibit that showed the range of housing choices, and describe what's commonly referred to as the missing middle, and this is a, kind of a way of describing what's happening in these, in the products that are between a single-family detached home and a mid-rise apartment, so what's happening in between, and these are things like duplexes, triplexes, courtyard apartments, bungalow courtyards, townhomes, live-work units, and the like. So, nationwide, there is a recognition that these types of home choices are not, not in line with the demand by, by the nation, and there's just simply not enough of these, quote, "missing middle" housing choices. They used to be a really popular development option for prior generations, but for a variety of reasons, they aren't finding the same role in every agency's housing stock as they used to. So, today's generations looking for those entry-level or starter homes are struggling to find the appropriate type of housing option, because these products really haven't been developed as they were in past generations. Because these often serve younger families, working professionals, or first-time homeowner, homeowners, they are also an opportunity to help support your employers by providing a unique housing choice that serves the needs of their employees. So, by expanding the range of housing choices associated with the missing middle, the city can really do a great job of attracting larger employees, employers, where their employees would like to have housing options, really in this kind of range of types of housing. So, the city has already, long before the update to its housing element, started to plan for ways to address this topic, and in particular, the city's Uptown Temecula-specific plan was specifically designed and adopted to provide for the opportunity to develop the missing middle housing. So, it really is focused on designing, designed to attract employers and, and jobs, and to provide market-rate, meaning non-deed-restricted or non-covenant-restricted, housing that is affordable to the community's workforce. And Uptown Temecula also identified underutilized sites and need of redevelopment that could be incentivized and redeveloped and serve as a really catalyst for, for this special area of the city. And the city has seen two residential projects come in here, and increasing interest in developing an uptown, and really serving the role of developing this missing middle housing. So, as we can see, again, this was anticipated directly in the uptown, uptown-specific plan. The exhibit that I showed earlier showing the range of housing choices, an exact kind of replication of that was included in the Uptown Temecula-specific plan. So, really happy that the city's been planning proactively to address what they could tell was a challenge associated with these types of housing products. And again, it does specifically allow for the development of missing middle housing, especially in the uptown area. It also is tackled in other areas of the city as well, Altair, Old Town, and the Harvest and Overlay, all proactively address the role and, by providing opportunities, and specifically allow for the ability to develop the missing middle housing products. All right, so I'm gonna kind of pivot now to a review of the city's past accomplishments. So, we've gotta not only look at trends, policies, programs, and see where we're headed, but we also need to look at the fifth-cycle housing element and understand the effectiveness of the policies, programs included in that element to know how we can do a good job in planning for the next eight years. So, the draft housing element includes a discussion of the success of past programs, and it's been found that the overarching goals, policies, and programs of the current general plan continue to be appropriate. Some have certainly been modified, and we'll dive into that a little bit deeper. Some of the programs have been revised, others have been added, and this is really in regards to the input we heard from the community and complying with state housing law. So, we've got some topic, new topics related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, the way that sites are identified to accommodate the city's RENA, some updates to the development code required to be consistent with state law, and a variety of new legislative requirements the city's obligated. the city's obligated to include. So as we looked to the success of the past housing element, the fifth cycle had directed the city to adopt a new affordable housing overlay zone, which it did. And the success of that is being resulted through the entitlement of projects under the affordable housing overlay. The city has continued its financial support of organizations like the Riverside County Continuum of Care and other nonprofit organizations that partner on key housing topics. The city's issued RFPs to develop various city-owned sites specifically for affordable housing. The city's updated its accessory dwelling units ordinance and provided educational materials to the community to support the development of ADUs, and has focused efforts on preserving the affordable housing stock, including the rehab and upgrade of the Rancho California Apartments and renew of its Section Eight contracts. During the 2014 to 2021 RENA period, the city delivered over eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-five housing units, and that's one hundred and twenty percent of its fifth-cycle RENA. As you can see shown on the screen, the city's RENA for the past planning period was just under fifteen-hundred units. And those that were delivered during that planning period, again, totaled about nineteen-hundred. So there was a surplus of about eleven-hundred, twelve-hundred units delivered during that. More heavily weighted towards the above moderate income units. So this new housing element really focuses on plans and programs to help encourage development of those lower household income housing units. So looking forward, your draft housing element that has been circulated for public review and presented to you tonight is broken down into a few parts. The first part is called the Housing Plan. This is your goals, policies, and programs. So the nuts and bolts of the how and the what and the why about how we plan for housing over the next eight years. Part two is the Background Report. This is all the technical work, analysis, summaries, data collection that went into developing the goals, policies, and programs. The Background Report provides an assessment of your housing needs, an inventory of existing housing, an assessment of fair housing concerns, analyzes constraints to providing housing, and describes the resources available to develop new units in accordance with your RENA and the preservation of the city's existing housing stock. So the Housing Plan, it does revise some of the city's existing goals and policies to, one, better reflect state law and also reflect community input. The Housing Plan also includes new policy direction, again, consistent with state law related to maintaining adequate capacity to accommodate your RENA, the way that sites are reused and identified in a city's housing element, and efforts to reduce impacts associated with non-governmental constraints. The Housing Plan also includes revisions to some of the existing programs to better reflect the community's needs and the success and evaluation as determined from the past cycle review. Those that were edited specifically are Program One, related to the land use policy and development capacity, Program Six, related to the density bonus ordinance, Program Eleven for energy conservation and energy efficiency, Program Twelve, related to development fees, and Program Twenty-Two, talking about equal housing opportunity. There are a number of new programs that have been added to the city's housing element as well. So those new programs that are included to help guide the city's efforts over the next eight years include a role for the city to maintain adequate capacity at its available sites throughout the planning period, some technical processes for how the city converts public property, the way that cities are responsible for replacing affordable units, accessory dwelling units, special needs housing construction, a variety, again, of specific zoning code amendments required to bring the zoning code consistent with state law, and a new economic displacement risk analysis tackling some of the issues related to affirmatively furthering fair housing. So looking specifically at the sites inventory, again, the city had a RENA of approximately just over forty-one-hundred units. And again, I want to be clear that the city has adequate, has determined that it has adequate capacity to accommodate its RENA at all of the income levels at areas already identified and approved for residential development. One component we get to look at are units that have been constructed since the beginning of our RENA period, starting on July first of this year. We also get to look at units that are approved but not yet built, the role of accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units in expanding the city's housing stock, and then really identifying specific vacant residential lands that are outside of specific plan areas, and then vacant residential land that are inside of specific plan areas, and understanding the capacity associated with those development opportunities. These vacant sites do include land designated as part of the city's affordable housing overlay. So the city's RENA, again, was four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three units for its sixth cycle and broken down into the income categories shown on the screen, taking out the credits for units constructed or approved since July first of 2021, along with the projected development of accessory dwelling units over the eight-year planning period, and the availability of vacant residential sites both inside and outside of specific plan areas. The city has demonstrated that it has a surplus capacity of approximately five thousand, three hundred units, most of those weighted in the moderate to above moderate income categories. But there is a surplus demonstrated in your housing element for all household income levels. On the screen is an exhibit of those sites that are currently vacant and already designated and approved for residential development. So again, just to recap, the city has determined that it does have adequate units to accommodate its RENA at the sixth cycle without any programs to rezone or redesignate sites.
All right. So I want to talk a little bit about public outreach during this process. It's a very important component, and obviously, the last two years have been very challenging for this, but we've tried our best to conduct public outreach. So we conducted a meaningful public outreach. We had a designated website that's been available for the last two years, and we had a robust housing survey that we conducted electronically, but we made sure that certain populations that may not be as likely to use online surveys were really targeted to make sure that they could provide their input, including surveys to our seniors and our homeless outreach teams. We emailed stakeholder lists to make sure that they're aware of what was going on during the process, and we did hold a virtual workshop and an in-person workshop just a few weeks ago. We also conducted general advertisements, which included a newsletter that included an article about the housing element to every household within the city of Temecula. We had a brand, it was called #HowIsThis with a hashtag, that was consistent throughout the process. We did economic development blasts. We had Channel Three spotlights. We had Temecula Chamber mixers, Southwest Riverside County of Association of Realtors meetings. We had flyers at laundromats and coffee shops, emails to affordable housing property managers, and focused outreach to homeless and seniors, as I mentioned earlier. On the right of this slide, you'll see all the different points of outreach we conducted the last two years, whether it was an email, a meeting. But really, we have several metrics that we wanted to recap. And we had eight hundred and sixty survey responses, which is one of the largest we've had for something like this during the process. And that really formed the basis of developing this housing element. We had over fifty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight emails sent. Again, those thirty-three thousand newsletters that went out, seventy-seven thousand social media impressions, which means it popped up on someone's screen and they were able to see this particular topic. And we had over eight hundred and forty-nine social media clicks, which, again, from a planning perspective, this is a very successful outreach. Moving on, in terms of SECO for this project, in compliance with SECO Guideline Section 15164, an addendum to the General Plan FEIR has been prepared, which concludes that the proposed updates to the General Plan Housing Element and Public Safety Element do not result in any new or gradient, greater environmental impacts than were previously analyzed, disclosed, or mitigated. The housing element update is not requiring rezoning of any parcels in the city. Moreover, the safety element is merely being updated to conform with changes in state law. None of the conditions in SECO Guideline Sections 15162 are present to require the preparation of a subsequent ER, and no additional environmental review is required. Our city attorney is going to take a moment to discuss a few things that have changed during the public draft housing element and the public draft for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Brandon. So I will make this quick. There was a draft that was circulated for thirty days during that period. We were also internally reviewing it, and we've made some minor tweaks. None of them are substantive changes. We have not changed any of the programs or policies. But the housing element, we have made some minor changes I wanted to just bring to your attention so that everyone's aware. The housing element is required to set forth the city's progress towards meeting the goals that were set forth in the prior cycle for the housing element. And so there were some revisions that were made to those sections to just further elaborate on the progress that we had made to that end. The housing element is also required to analyze non-governmental restraints on the development of housing. And additional information was added about applicants that seek to construct projects below the maximum density allowed, because that's kind of one of the issues that we sometimes have. We allow the construction up to a certain density, but developers won't always come in asking for those same density amounts. So there was further elaboration on that subject as well. And with that, I will turn it back to Brandon.
Thanks, Marisol. In addition to those changes, staff has been listening to our constituents, and we've heard some concerns from those in the affordable housing community there that really suggested some great ideas that we think should be implemented. So based on feedback from constituents, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission direct staff to develop two additional policies for city council consideration. The first policy would be exploring the possibility of a housing trust partnership with the Western Riverside County Council of Governments. Now, this is already actually underway, but we think we should formalize this based on some of our constituents' concerns to continue to explore this option. Additionally, the second option we've discussed is explore voluntary outreach program with private entities to solicit donations to fund affordable housing programs, possibly in cooperation with a nonprofit. So these are two things we heard from the community, and we've been listening, and we really do believe that these are some things the Planning Commission should allow staff to direct the city council to consider as well. And with that, staff is recommending, the Planning Commission recommend that the city council adopt the updated housing element and public safety element. Staff and the consultant are available for questions.
Thank you for both parts of that one presentation. Questions of staff, start over here on the left.
All available land means privately-owned land, is that correct?
That is correct. If there were to be any city-owned land that could be developed for affordable housing, that would have to be reflected as well.
Okay. The RENA number, does that include rental properties as well as properties that the public can purchase?
The RENA number doesn't differentiate between rentals or for-sale properties, it's just total capacity, how the market develops those. Obviously, we're taking a look at the analysis to say, hey, is a certain portion of this can be rental, is a certain portion can be for sale? But it doesn't separate rental or for sale.
So that would include apartments, then?
Correct.
Are there any lower-cost housing tools available to us from the state or federal government that we have not adopted?
Anytime we have an opportunity to solicit funds from the state or the federal government, we take that opportunity. Unfortunately, there's a historic low investment in the federal government in affordable housing. And from the state, the tool that was used for affordable housing redevelopment was shut down by the state. So one of the greatest tools that we had, and we were very successful particularly in Old Town, was redevelopment. The state's taken that tool away, and really, the state has changed their view on this to get away from direct funding to creating zoning, right? They want cities to provide private capacity, private opportunity to develop this through new zoning laws, density bonus laws, and things like that. But there isn't as much direct funding. But when we have the opportunity, we do go after those funds.
Okay. Last question. Would the adoption of the housing element prevent use of future programs, grants, and other tools to assist with lower-cost housing?
Just to clarify on your question, what you're asking is, are you asking that if we adopt it, will it prevent us from getting additional funds?
Correct. So in other words, if we adopt this, and in two years, there is a new program, would that, would adopting this prevent us from taking advantage of that program?
No, that shouldn't be the case. Really, some of these policies are a little bit broader just for that reason, right? We're not listing every single state law in this because of just that reason, right? Things change, new programs come into place. And if for some reason, there was something that came into place, and we had the opportunity to go after funds, we would bring this back and amend it as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Tullisio. Commissioner Ruiz.
Yeah, thank you. Just actually, one question. I was able to attend both the workshop and some of the other community stuff, and I think the outreach is phenomenal. So I think it's really commendable on that. My question that never brought up really before, when they showed the slide that had the surplus of fifty-one-hundred, fifty-seven-hundred or so, would that put us at then a hundred percent capacity? Does that reflect what would remain available beyond the forty-one, ninety-three that we're proposing in this element? Does that number reflect full build-out of the city?
It reflects build-out of those sites identified in the inventory included in your housing element. So those are the majority of available sites still left in the city for development, but it doesn't represent full build-out of the entire city, only those sites identified within your housing element inventory.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then if you're able to put up the two recommendations that were proposed from the So I love both of these. I think they're fantastic ideas, and I think that they want to move forward. Do you happen to know, for number two, for donations for funding affordable housing, would these be looking to help offset developer cost funds? Or are these looking for some like down payment assistance or deed restriction mortgage programs? Or do you have any idea what those might look like?
That's a great question, and we don't know the answer to that now, because we really need to explore it. So we need to look at how would this work? Who would be the recipient of the funds? Could the city be the recipient of the funds? From the affordable housing community, what we heard is kind of the initial idea was, we have a lot of corporations in the community that need housing, obviously, to house their workforce. And so we want to address those concerns. And so we don't know exactly how that's going to form. We really need to spend the time doing the research, understanding what this looks like. Is this in conjunction with the nonprofit? Does this maybe work with the housing trust? And so we need to explore it more, and that's why we're proposing to add this in an exploratory way so we can understand that.
Okay. So the verbiage listed here allows that opportunity to really come back later with some of those more defined.
Exactly. It doesn't pigeonhole us into one specific way of doing it. We have opportunity to be flexible. If there's new programs that come up or new ideas, we think it was a great idea from the community, and we want to make sure we have that flexibility.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I do think it's a good idea and would welcome looking at some of those as well.
So this could actually be several programs. You could have a program that assists with down payments and a program that assists developers with reducing costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
John, anything?
I'm going to jump ahead a little bit. I'm probably better suited towards the end of the discussion, but I do want to say that I've been here a long time. I'm the oldest in several different ways, commissioner up here. And I have seen a lot of these elements come together with staff and non-government agencies and the kind of effort they put into it and the work that goes together. It's like a big puzzle. I've watched each of those pieces come together and the work that goes into each of them individually. And all of a sudden, the pieces are going together into a housing element that is a magnificent document in my mind. The work that went into it and is going into it is just amazing.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry?
They can't hear you.
I was just commenting to staff and non-government agencies that have worked so hard on this, and I've, again, seen it come together in little bits, and all of a sudden becomes a document which can all be repaid of. So kudos again to staff and non-government agencies alike that are working on this. And we'll talk about that later. Thank you.
A quick comment, if, just the devil's advocate side of that, if they were doing such a great job, we probably wouldn't be in this pickle right now of needing more. So could you go back to those two recommended actions? So you said the affordable housing community. What is the affordable housing community? Explain that to me.
Be happy to. We have some advocates that are really in the community that have said, hey, we want affordable housing, we want to be able to live where we work.
Applicants?
Constituents, sorry. So they've really been advocating for this, and we heard them. These are both really good ideas. You know, one of them, we've already been exploring, and really, we wanted to formalize this. And the second idea was kind of an innovative idea.
What's the need to formalize it?
Yeah. The need to formalize it, I think, is really to explore and have something documented in our housing element that we're listening to our constituents and saying, you know what? This is something we're going to look into. And when we do our report in the next eight years, we're going to report on what type of progress we've made. How do we explore? eight years, we're going to report on what type of progress we've made. How do we explore? Were we successful, or was it something wasn't viable?
Would there be anything existing constraints that would prevent you from doing that without this?
No.
So, this is basically throwing something out to satisfy someone's need to have some language that's very vague, very, explore the possibility.
I think it's more of to provide a commitment that we're listening to our community. We've been listening during the public draft review the last two years, and formalizing that commitment.
Yeah. It gets back to the, it gets back to my initial concerns and things with, that we do that we don't do anything about. We create ordinances, and we don't enforce them. On and on and on, it just goes on. So, explore the possibility is going to be written down, and that's going to make somebody feel real good that we're exploring the possibility. When you could do it, you could pick up the phone and talk to somebody in our cog and start talking about this, is that right?
We're actually already doing it, so just a status update on that.
I made my point, Brandon.
And just to clarify, though, we are required legally to update on the progress that we are making in those programs. So, if we have this as a set program, and one of our policies that has, then we have to essentially report on whether or not we're actually doing what's in it. So, that's a distinction. If it's an actual policy, we've got to make our progress report as, you know, like what was discussed earlier today about us explaining and elaborating how much progress we've made in meeting last cycle's goal, that will have to come up for the seventh cycle. We're going to have to come back and explain what happened in the sixth cycle, and whether we made progress on those policies and goals.
Yeah, I get that. It's just that this particular item is explore the possibility, and I don't see that as being a requirement that you would have to refer back to and say, boy, we explored the possibility, and it didn't work, and it's in this document. So, it just goes on and on and on. It's, that would concern me, but you've explained it. Thank you, Brandon, very much. Second thing is, Amanda, you had mentioned, and I hate to have you go back through your slides, but the one side that had things that were adding to the element, and I think you called it equal housing, or affirmatively, where is it? Equal housing opportunity, that's one. Can you go into little detail without going into great detail, but just, can you brush that out a little bit, and tell me what that program's going to be?
Yes. So, the city's program 22 Equal Housing Opportunity was included in the past housing element. This is one that has been modified in response to a piece of state legislation called AB 686, which required cities to consider the role of affirmatively furthering fair housing as part of your housing element update. The city already is obligated to consider fair housing topics through its role and responsibility in allocating federal funding, and has regularly updated and participated in various regional fair housing efforts. So, this is a continuation and modification of an existing program. The modifications largely relate to changes in trends and demographics that the community has experienced over the eight years, and in particular, working collaboratively with the fair housing service providers to make sure that your residents are fully educated about their rights related to fair housing, and ultimately, just clarifying that the city can use to, is committed to ensuring that all community members have a safe, fair, and equitable place to live. So, these are programs that the city has largely undertaken in collaboration with your fair housing provider, and are codified now in order to meet that piece of state requirement.
Okay. And then, you had mentioned, once again, the affirmative, affirmative...
Affirmatively furthering fair housing, yes.
Yeah, can you explain that? What is that in detail? What does that entail?
Yes. It, again, just essentially means that every person has a safe and equitable choice in their housing, their housing choice. So, someone couldn't be discriminated, again, based on a protected class, race, ethnicity, disability, age, income. All of those should be considered equal, and everyone should have the same equal access and right to live in a housing unit of their choice. So, issues related to affirmatively furthering fair housing basically say that the city will support that, support that philosophy, that everyone deserves an equitable choice in their housing selection, and if discrimination was to be occurring, that the city would refer residents to the provider of fair housing services that manages that process. So, the city itself is not an arbitrator in that. They are providing information, education, and connecting residents with those agencies that provide those fair housing services. So, the city itself does not resolve issues. It connects the dots between your residents and those agencies that do provide solutions.
Great explanation, Amanda. Thank you very much. Those are my questions. Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing.
We have received three emails. I will read them into the record. Copies have been placed on the dais in front of you. The first one is from Wayne Magar. Hello, Temecula Planning. As a resident of the city of Temecula, the issue of affordable housing hasn't been addressed by the city of Temecula like it should. Other cities are addressing the problem like the city of San Diego. My hope is the city will be more open to the needs of the city, especially attainable low-income workforce housing. Regards, Wayne Magar. The second email that we've received is from Bolivia Lawton. Hi, my name is Bolivia Lawton, and I'm here about affordable housing, and I would like to see housing that is more affordable for working people like me. I'm also a hard-working citizen, and would like to buy a house that I can afford. The third email received from Nicholas and Elizabeth Beck. Dear Stuart Fisk, housing element, we are writing to express our support for affordable housing in the city of Temecula. As Temecula residents for over 12 years, we have noticed that there is a housing affordability crisis for low-income families. One of the most important actions we can take to address that crisis is to begin to build affordable homes. While Temecula continues to approve the building of 1,000-plus new homes on Butterfield Road, affordable housing for low-income families is woefully nonexistent. It is important that Temecula and the developers begin to be a leader in affordable housing to ensure that residents of all income levels can afford to live in our beautiful city. We look forward to contributing our voice and learning more as the conversation about affordable housing develops in the coming months. In the meantime, we wanted you to know how important this issue is to us, and hope we can work together to adopt strong and citywide affordable housing. Thank you, Nicholas and Elizabeth Beck. We have received eight request-to-speak forms from speakers that are present. I will read the first three names so that the other two can prepare after the person before them has spoke. We're going to have...
Denise, if I can interrupt you real quick, is there a time constraint on them, on their comments?
Time constraint.
Three minutes or five? I think it's five.
I believe it's five minutes, yes.
Just wanted to remind you, five minutes, and someone over there is going to be keeping track, Brandon or somebody. Very good. I just want to make sure we have that officially covered.
Okay. The first speaker will be George Rambo, followed by Laurel Lamont and Christine O'Neill. First, George, Dr. George Rambo.
Is it possible to have the site inventory slide brought up? My comments are directed primarily on the site inventory map. Along Inez, just south of the Duck Pond, there are two parcels, one of which is a professional building, and the other one is for medium-density residential. I have two concerns in particular. Inez has a severe traffic problem. It wasn't originally intended to be a bypass of the freeway. There are horse properties along that, and there's a danger in the animal crossings, and to ride along the road is dense as the traffic is. Tonight, when I came down to the meeting, the traffic was lined up bumper to bumper from California, Rancho, California, and all the way down as far as I could see toward the circle. We need to solve that traffic problem in terms of whatever we plan regarding those two parcels. The, that problem has been surfacing with the commission in the past, as well as the city council, and we haven't solved it at all. It just seems to keep growing. We keep looking at, trying to get around it, and it's hopeful that the Temecula Parkway interchange will help that, but I haven't seen it happen yet. The other thing is parking. In my research, in terms of the aspect of the mosque, I found that where there's not adequate concern for parking, you can have the parks that are near to it overrun with overflow parking. Already, the restaurant that's right on the Duck Pond already has a problem with overflow parking from the Duck Pond. I think we need to make a provision for serious parking enforcement. I know that there's no parking allowed after nine at night, and before five in the morning, yet I've seen vehicles parked there during those hours as I go by. It ought to be a toe-away type of parking enforcement. The restaurant needs to be able to have adequate parking as well, and that those two parcels, the professional building and the medium-density, concern for the overflow parking that could potentially result on the Duck Pond, it could be a significant environmental impact for the community members, because the Duck Pond is something that is definitely a significant part of our community, and a lot of activities happen at the Duck Pond, and I would hate to see that curtailed by what goes into those two parcels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will verify what you've just said. The event on September 11th at the Duck Pond, the parking was outrageously hard to find, so absolutely a very timely point. Very good.
The second speaker is Laurel Lamont.
Good evening.
Hi. All right, so for those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Laurel Lamont. I am one of those affordable housing, attainable homeownership humans that need that opportunity here. I've been speaking here for about four years, asking. I'm a single, full-time mother. I work full-time. I work at Trader Joe's. My days start between 4:30 and 5:30, six days a week. I'm up, take the kid to school, go work full-time, come participate as a constituent. I, nobody's taxes, put food on my table. I pay all my own bills. I am not subsidized. I can't possibly, on my income, working 14 years for Trader Joe's, afford a home within this community. And what I'm asking, thank you, by the way, for putting in the missing middle for having that on there. That's super important, and I'm super grateful for it. I'm one of many, many, many. My company is full of me's, people who can't afford to live here, people who commute to Paris, and single moms, and renting rooms from people who can afford the homes here. We aren't subsidized in any way. We just can't afford to live within this community, and there just has to become an equitable opportunity. So, in that dialogue, the city has done very little to educate on what equity is, and I would just love to see that dialogue happen, so it's clearer, because I think the resistance to it is a fear in affordable housing, which I don't want any more affordable housing. We have 13, and we have currently 13 affordable housing apartment developments. We have three more in the pipeline. The affordable housing apartments don't really help me with ending upward mobility. They don't, most of it I don't qualify for, because I make too much. I make between $35,000 and $40,000 a year. You know, that's not including my health insurance, and my car payment, and what it costs to raise a boy without any child support. We need just smaller homes that we can somehow purchase into, so we can have the security of a monthly payment that isn't going to go up every year, even though our income isn't going up every year. Because my rent goes up every single year, my income doesn't go up every year, but my rent does. I also pay $80, $800 a month in coin, just to do my laundry. So, there's just lots of factors here when it comes to affordable, attainable homeownership options for the working people that serve this community. So, I'm just here to speak on that behalf, because this isn't about me wanting a handout, or people wanting a handout. We serve the community. You brought the jobs here, you brought the businesses here. Then you built the homes, and the homes want the accessibility of the restaurants, and the grocery stores, and the Trader Joe's, and now a Whole Foods, but those come with employees, and those employees can't, on a single income, afford to live within the community, which is looking for options. Options so that we can also raise our own families on our own, within this lovely community, and send our kids to good schools, and have a quality of life. Affordable housing by design should be transitional. It should not be some permanent place. It should be the first step to homeownership. But there's nothing, there's no step from our current affordable housing projects to homeownership. You don't go from 800 rent for a one-bedroom to, and I think a two-bedroom, and depending on what affordable housing project you're talking about, to 500, 600, $800,000 home. There, again, $35,000 to $40,000 a year, that's all I'm going to bring home. I don't have anybody to hand me over a deposit on a home of that nature, nor could I, do I need that kind of space. So, that's where I'm at. I've brought many of the ideas to the table on how we can create potential homeownership opportunities for the community, for the workforce of the community, and I hope that...
You have 30 seconds.
The city takes this into all, all of it, into consideration, because it's super important to bring the community together, so that when you go and you see your grocer, and you see the person who waits on you at the table, you know that they live here too, and that they can live here too, and raise their family. That's it. Thank you.
You?
Christine O'Neill. Following Christine will be Michael Jordan.
Hang on, Christine. Okay.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. How are you? I was at Oscars today. They did not have any parking for their business after the event. It was a lovely event on 9/11, but we need to, we need to be aware that that affordable housing and that building that is going to be built by the Duck Pond, Mr. Rambo is exactly right. The traffic there is, it is very, very difficult. It backs up all the way to the loop, and people are trying to escape by going on the right-hand side into the bike lane. We need some more infrastructure there before you put in, before we pass this. It won't be safe for the people who live there. It's just a very impacted area, and also, of course, we want to see our businesses have adequate parking for their customers. We, these are people who have put their money into these businesses, and we don't want them to go out of business because no one can park at the Oscars facility. Very few people are going to want to walk across Rancho, California road, so I'm in accordance with Mr. Rambo on that. We need to have a little bit more of investigation on that site. I am not against affordable housing. We want you here. We want you to be able to live here. When my husband and I moved out here in 1989, he's a retired LA school district, we drove back and forth for 12 years, because we loved it here, and we wanted to live here, and we know how hard it is for people when they can't live, where they can't work and live in the same community. So, we want you. We want you to have choices. That particular site, though, please look into it, because it is very dangerous, particularly on Inez. People are driving all over to escape that traffic. It's going to be very dangerous. Also, I wanted to say that I'm hoping that if we do, you know, arrive and have these units coming into our town, that no one in the city government or on the planning commission is going to be involved in any way, shape, or form with the development, in any way financially of these units. I think that, you guys, if you have any interest in it, you need to recuse yourself, and I thank you very much for your service. And I thank you very much for your service. God bless you.
Thank you.
Michael Jordan. Following will be Greta Ponarelli.
Good evening.
Evening. I'm in complete agreement with George here, what he said about the traffic. And it's, anybody looked into the water situation of taking care of what you're planning to do? As far as the traffic goes, I have to drive that every single day, and it is nothing but a battle. I can't imagine another 2,000 homes going in that two-parcel section and dealing with that. You really need to take a look at that. And whatever many time I have, I want to divert to Greta.
Yeah, Michael and I worked on this together. First of all, I've lived in this community for 26 years. I have been a licensed real estate agent for 40 years, including land use consulting and loan origination. So I'm very aware of affordability. I'm very aware of what happens very often when you make it too easy for people to get into places. Not saying that we shouldn't do things for seniors, people with special needs. I understand we need to accommodate them and do something for them. I understand that. But I saw the last housing crisis. I saw so many homes that people got into that they couldn't afford, that they absolutely destroyed and ranshacked. And that really hurts an area. So I'm very concerned about exactly what we're going to bring into the area. That's something that I have thought about very sincerely. And also, I'm concerned about, we moved to Temecula because we love the small town, this wonderful, warm, homey kind of place. And right now, the people that live here, our lives are on the chopping block. The affordable housing is not a win-win situation for us. They want to be able to live here and work here, or there's many people that live here that can't afford to work here. They have to go to Orange County, like Michael had to drive, or we had to go to San Diego. There are not enough high-income jobs. So we want to stay here too. We also have to drive. So the roads are a concern. We should not be putting any housing in place until the infrastructure is there. It is ridiculous how the freeways are, the roads, water is huge. I know that you say there's mandates from the state, but there's many cities, I've done my research, that have fought the mandates, and they have, they have won. Sierra Madre is one of them, because they have a water issue. It's very important to us that we look at the big picture, not just the people that want to live here, but the people that are here. How is it a win situation for us? We're going to have more traffic, we're probably going to have more school bonds, because now they say they need more money for schools. So me, as a senior citizen, my costs are going up so that they can be here. So what, how is this going to enhance my life? I don't see anything but a massive carbon footprint, reducing the open space, more need for police, we'll need more roads, more schools. I really believe that we have to look at the big picture. It's very myopic. It's looking towards one group of people, and I think we need to serve everybody. Like I said, I worked as a liaison between homeowners and developers, and it has to be a win-win situation for both of us. I think we need to look at the entire community and say, how is it benefiting us as a whole? So I strongly oppose it. I strongly oppose it to the magnitude that it is. It's extremely overreaching. And thank you so much. I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Bridget Green, followed by Dario Biancot.
Good evening.
Good evening. I was here last night, and I mentioned some items about housing. I'm actually a very good example. In 1991, I had a family with three children and a husband, no income. I asked for help in the Orange County area, and what she told me at the time, she says, "Well, you couldn't live here, and besides, you own a Mercedes." And I says, "Well, the Mercedes was repossessed." So at the end, I gave up on the whole idea, and I packed up and I had to move to Colorado and split my kids up into different areas. So my two daughters went to one area, my son came with us to Colorado. So the confusion on this is, a lot of it is Section 8 housing. I've been through this that time, and I only did it once. So now I'm a senior, and I've been waiting over five years. I put my name in about three or four counties to look for affordable housing. My income is so that I would not qualify in most units, because my house, my income, affordable housing, that my income was too low. So in other words, I had to come up with some other income or job to be able to get into an affordable housing. Now, I'm sure most of you are familiar with Summer House. It is now Madera Vista. During COVID, three units came available to me. First of all, Irvine, where I used to live a long time ago, so I used that address that time to apply. Well, they called me up, and I thought it was a joke anyway, because the unit was like $2,000, I mean, $2,000 a month for a high-rise. So when they called me, I was in shock, and I said, "Well, I can't afford that." And she said, "Oh, no, no, we have affordable housing." And so apparently, what they do is they apply some units in each apartment to affordable housing. So she said, "Your rent would be 900." And I says, "Well, that's about what I get as an income, so I couldn't afford it." So then I got a call from Corona, and it was the same scenario. And then I saw a list in, on Craigslist. They seem to advertise affordable housing on Craigslist. And I was all excited, and I said, "It's in Vista." So I put my name down, and then about three weeks later, I finally got through another phone number. And you go run around with phone numbers, trying to figure out what's going on. And I finally got someone on the phone that said, "No, we are using you as a backup." And she ran my credit without telling me. So the system itself is very flawed. Section 8 housing, over five, six years ago, I put my name in, and they said, "It's families, first mothers with children, veterans, and then seniors." And at that time, I wasn't a senior, you know, 10, 20 years ago, whatever. But now, I was so excited, and I says, "Well, maybe I have a chance." Well, it's been seven years, and I've never been able to qualify or get in on the list or whatever the reason. And yet, I know of a case where the woman claimed she had two children. She was able to figure out a system, and I don't want to get into the details, but she was able to get $1,200, Section 8 housing immediately. And all she had to do is find a place. And California changed the laws where you can rent an apartment, and they cannot refuse you, and you have a Section 8 voucher. I don't know if you know all those laws. And what happens now is you can build for your mother-in-law unit in the back, and HOA can't override it, things like that. So I've been really exposed to a lot of information, including the traffic. And the traffic where I'm at now, which is Madera Vista, there is traffic between Temecula Parkway and Margarita. I was backed up into the Temecula Parkway to be able to make a turn to get into the bank and Home Depot in that corner. And people are cutting through, by the Arco Station, through parking lots and a doctor's office to get to the other street. So there's traffic issues in a lot of places. I have a list here, but I'm not quite all there with that. The garages, for instance, they have garages where I'm at. They are being used mostly for storage. Management does not enforce the rules in that sense. So I share a garage with someone else. And you might want to consider that when you choose a contractor to build this. I have to open one door, and then the person next to me has his door. So one day, I opened it up, and I've only been there less than a year. There was a strange man in the garage. Okay? So he's been sleeping in that car next to me, whoever it is. The real owner is not driving. He's actually in the unit, and he's an alcoholic, and he's being served by a homeless person that gives him the alcohol in the unit. So there's a lot of problems with drugs. Also, the affordability. What happens is, they say, your income is, let's say, $20,000. And they can say it's $20,000, but they have $20,000 somewhere else. Some people have dogs in that community that are worth $2,000. They drive Hummers and Toyotas, the sports models. They come from Utah, from out-of-state, they park on the street, and it's packed full. They never get a ticket. It's a dead-end street. So there's a lot of abuse, and it doesn't connect.
That concludes your time.
It doesn't connect with affordable housing. Sorry. Thank you, though. Okay.
Dario Biancot, please clarify the spelling of your last name for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I am for
You need him to spell his name? Is that what you ask?
Yes, please spell your last name.
My name is Dario Bianchi.
Thank you.
B as in boy, Bianchi, okay? It's like Blanco, but it's in Italian. It's Bianchi. Okay, I am for good development in town, and I am against bad development, okay? First of all, I don't see any reference in the presentation to water on the presentation, so that is one of my major concerns. Water is essential. There's no question about, there's no argument. We are in a drought, desertic environment, everybody knows. The planning commission should suggest the city council and the county board of supervisor to contact Sacramento and ask for water allowance. No water, no new constructions. I received a note from the water district that my rate is going to go up, because there is a drought, exactly, written on the notice. So you should be aware of that when you do planning, because no water, no development. Air is essential. I think we agree on that. We need our elected official to take a strong position on the carbon footprint due to the construction of thousands and thousands of homes. We should plant about 100,000 plants in town, needs to be planted in the city to offset pollution. I understand a green environment, having worked for three years with the founder of Trees for the Future. I plant trees in tropical areas, so I am a green guy, okay? But I'm not a political green guy. The work politician in Sacramento seems very concerned about carbon footprint. Great. So now it is their turn to show how they will come to the rescue to clean air in imposed construction of high-density housing in Temecula. I want how we're going to have this. Traffic is horrendous. Everybody knows. Traffic is horrendous. A bypass is needed at the exit of Rancho California in Nats. This has to be built by the state with the money of the state. So before we start construction, they have to come and build the overpass on the exit of Rancho California. This, you guys can request to the city council. The city council goes all the way to Sacramento. Price of homes are determined by demand and fiscal regulation by state and federal government. This is the most expensive state in the United States. Everybody knows that. This is because we lost over 500,000 people moving out of the states because exactly of the cost of living and the housing unaffordability, okay? So in Sacramento, instead of a pet project like the train in the valley, where live 1 million people, here in the south, we are 20 million. Why they don't come and put the salinization plant so we can develop land here? There's plenty land between here and Hemet. Why would they do that? Why you guys don't tell Sacramento what really is the issue? Your work is great. I don't have nothing against, but we don't have any water. How we can resolve the problem of the water, you have to tell me now. The city council had to tell me, not only to me, to the people that live in Temecula. Problem of housing starts with high-paying jobs. How many high-paying jobs are in town? Not too many. The lady here, she's making barely money to stay alive, I would say. So what is the, what is the development of the business? The real business I'm talking about? The one that pay $30, $40 an hour, not $10, $12 an hour, like my son is making, okay? This is going to exactly the planning commission, because if there is no money, there is no income. And Sacramento is spending the money to give it to you or to the city of Temecula to develop affordable housing, spending on pet project. And that is what we have here in this Riverside County now. There is plenty money of housing. Do you understand how many billions of dollars they're wasting in Sacramento?
You have 30 seconds.
Yes, I know. I want a house in Newport Beach, but I cannot afford it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liam. If you would give us your last name for the record.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Liam McCarthy.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the local workforce. I work, shop, and spend nearly all my time here in Temecula. But I do not live here because renting, let alone homeownership, is completely out of grasp for workers like me, based entirely on current economic circumstances. Instead, people like me and many others that would love to call Temecula home live two or three, four, or many cities over to commute to jobs that are integral to the city, into this community. This means that while we are an important function of Temecula, we cannot actually live here and instead are only seen to contribute to traffic, which we have talked about a lot tonight, on the 15, as we leave for work to home or from work to work, which is becoming more of the norm for people like me who cannot afford to buy a home. This norm doesn't have to be. Anyone my senior can tell you that of a time where a single-income family working the very same sort of jobs that I work, which I'm in the grocery business, 40 years ago would have been able to more than enough supply them with the income to both attain a home and start a family, something that seems completely out of my grasp. I have ultimately given up on the idea of starting my own family because of this. The cost of living with one, two, or three children is undoable in the current economic reality. A large number of workers here in Temecula feel this way. A large portion of this has to do with the skyrocketing housing prices and types of home available around us, like the big 600 to $1 million monsters that I couldn't even fathom. A general lack of attainable, sorry, I got lost here. A large part of this has to do with blah, blah, blah. A general lack of attainable homes to accommodate people in a working-class income bracket. We're not asking for much. I don't want a handout. I've never asked for a handout. I've worked my whole working life, two, three jobs at a time. I've always been steadily employed. I merely want access to the same opportunities that many in their 50s and their 60s remember from 40 or so years ago had at my age. Affordable homes that someone can have without having to devote 80 hours a week for the next 30 years of my life. It has never been for a lack of hard work that keeps many workers and younger generations stowed, but instead, a lack of foresight and planning from cities such as Temecula, which is why I come to you tonight. So I'm asking you on behalf of the workforce to please consider us in your future plans, because we love this place, and we would be thrilled to live here too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public speakers.
Okay, so we don't have any more. I will close the public hearing, and we will open it up for discussion. Just a couple of comments before I turn it over. The city and the state doesn't tell people what to do with their property. All we can do is a general framework, what the city does, and people that own land have to abide by that framework. But we can't tell someone to build something. It's their land under this system we have. It's their right to develop it as long as it meets the conditions that are set down through planning and that type of thing, and that's what we've done. And we are trying to incorporate the framework that will allow more affordable housing. It is tough. It's tough in the entire state. Trust me, I worked for the state. I got told I had to work in Santa Barbara. That was pretty scary. I got told I had to move to San Diego and get a job. That's how I ended up in Temecula. So I drove 60 miles every day for years to do that. But I know, it's a problem everyone has, and it's California. Malibu, Coronado, I was in Coronado, and I thought, how are they dealing with this Rena issue? They don't have any land anyhow. But it's a problem, but it's not going unheard, or we're not, we're not not listening to those that have a need for that type of thing. But it's, it's important to realize the role of government and what we can and cannot do, and how we're restricted by laws that are passed, for better or worse, in Sacramento that impact this process, and they do. So, and the water issue, sir? Did he leave? Oh, he's still there. When a development comes up, a developer comes in, as well, I understand it, and I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong, and it could be general, but when a developer comes in and wants to do a development, the water providers, in other words, who, Eastern Municipal Water District or Metropolitan Water District, has to testify that there's water available for that development before it goes. So even though you and I may say there's no water, So even though you and I may say there's no water, if the water company says we have enough water to provide them, now, I'm not asking for you to answer, I'm just trying to explain, okay? But that's how my understanding is on that, and I agree, I got a letter, too, and my lawn's dying and that type of thing, but...
We don't have water today.
I know, but I'm just telling you, when it comes to us, that is something that's out of our concern. Well, I don't know your situation, I'm just saying, as it relates to development, as it relates to development, that is how the water issue is dealt with by...
Excuse me, the public comment period is over.
I'm just trying to address some of the comments that were made before. So, you know, you may not like them, you may like them, I don't know, but I'm just trying to help explain it a little better. Okay, so discussion will start on Adam's side this time.
Sure, thank you Chairman Watts. So just a couple of comments. I appreciate everyone's, you know, comments and participation here. Housing affordability as a whole, housing supply as a whole has been, you know, a massive challenge across the state. I just want to echo a couple of things back from the presentation. First off, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but we're, we're, we're looking to approve a housing element which just provides the framework for units to be built. We're not approving any projects, we're not approving any particular development that's coming in right now. Those would be looked at in the future, under the application of a potential developer, and then we would look then at the infrastructure and everything that's required for that. We're just looking at this from a housing element perspective from here. And the second, just a reminder, and Chairman Watts kind of alluded to that, is the city doesn't build houses, you know? And, and there, there is a lot of discussion. I, I travel for work, I do work in real estate, government affairs, I do travel to Sacramento, I do travel to Washington DC. We've had these conversations, but there's a lot that come forward and say, the city needs to do this, the county needs to do this. So much like Chairman Watts just said, there's only so much that we can do, but providing this framework does open that up. And I think if you look at the housing element, in my opinion, we've addressed all the needs. We've addressed different areas for it. Now, how we, how it comes forward, you know, that's going to be up to the developers. All we can do is provide an opportunity for them to come forward. The state does mandate that we have certain numbers provided, that's what's allocated within this here, but we can't force anybody to build any particular kind of project. And should they decide to come forward, we, we will evaluate everything about that project before it moves through the process. So I just wanted to put that out there because I do appreciate everyone's feedback, and I just didn't want to get tied up into a particular project, a particular parcel, a particular type of housing. Really what we're looking at here is the whole picture and the future of Temecula with what we are required to provide available to the potential developers out there. Just because the element has 4,193 units proposed does not mean that there would be 4,193 units definitely built within that. It's just that there has to be an opportunity for that. I just want to take a minute to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Well said, well said Commissioner Ruiz, well said. Commissioner Telleseal.
Yeah, I appreciate that, both sides of that question because it is a confusing and very complex issue. We're looking at, again, the pieces of a puzzle that should go together. Sometimes there's one little dot that doesn't go together and that affects somebody who's looking for affordable housing, and that hasn't been fixed yet. But this process is ongoing, and I, I can't promise that next week everybody's going to have his own home, because that's not going to happen. But the process goes on, and with this effort to, to put together a housing area in the framework of the state, which I got to tell you is a, a problem, that we try to match our abilities to, to work within those frameworks and provide something that at least promise or, or gives some direction to, to the cities and the, and the areas that need that kind of fulfillment for the state to be happy and go away, but right now, we're not, they're not going to. So we got, we got to make the thing work. I do want to comment on the young lady that, that addressed. I was here the first day you, you came and addressed the city council. You had your son with you, and it was a very moving and passionate presentation, and you've been continuing with those as time goes by. And I applaud you for that persistence and your, and your persuasion. And I, I was hoping at that time that somebody would jump out of the audience after the session. See, I've got a, a second unit in my backyard that you can have for your, for your price. Didn't happen, but things like that don't normally happen, but sometimes they do. I hope it happens for you, and until then, we'll keep working to try to make this thing as workable as we can. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Telleseal. I, I have said pretty much what I wanted to say earlier. There are bits and pieces of this thing that I would like to tear apart and redo, but that's not my job. And the people that did do this have done a great job, they've worked hard, they've worked with us as much as we can. But we have to approve a housing element if we're going to be able to approve anything because it's part of the law and it's part of what we have to follow. So the housing element is part of the general plan, we have to update it, that's what we're doing. We've had a chance for the public to weigh in on it, and that's been incorporated, as we referenced earlier, so we've done pretty much everything we can do. If a motion is made to accept this and move it, it will go before the city council, and if you're not happy with the decision, if we have one here, you are welcome to go take it to the city council if, because they're going to have to approve this as well if we do. So that's how the process works. With that, is anyone willing to make a motion?
I think we still need comments.
Mr. Hagel.
I just, I want to say that I share, I think, pretty much everybody's frustration. I think most of us probably or all of us do share those frustrations. Traffic and, you know, all kinds of other issues, parking and, and water rates and, you know, I'm retired, I watch, I watch the prices go up, I don't see the income going up. So I do share all that. Commissioner, Chair Watts, you had, you had started out with some frustration regarding a element of this that is not, it's not fixed, it's not, not a solution. And I take a little bit different approach to, to that. My questions were related to something that I was fearing, which is, we've put a stamp on this, it's done, it's put on the shelf, and it's, and it's all over with. And I'd rather see items in the, in the plan that are open items that we're working on so that it's not forgotten, that we can add to it, we come up with new solutions. I think it's a, it's a great potential solution to have a number of different pots of money that can be used for various different things that come from the public. Maybe Trader Joe's might be, you know, could end up being a leader in, in, in this. And what I love to see is ongoing work. Keep on, you know, we keep at it, and keep at it, and keep at it. So I, I was hoping this would be a living document that gets updated and changed as time goes on. So I, I share your frustration, but I, I was looking at it from kind of a different, different perspective. And, you know, I agree that this is a framework, it's something that needs to be approved, but I, you know, I don't want it to be the, the final solution. I want the solutions to continue to work. This is one element of the general plan, and the safety element is, is another element. I've been reading the general plan, it's going to probably take me another three or four months to read it all because I get a lot of naps in reading it. I think this, the housing element was, I think I saw 700 pages that I've read twice now, the old one and the new one in the last three weeks. So there is elements for everything from water and other infrastructure to traffic and other public roads, and they all contain plans, and they're all very large, and there's a lot of activity that's been going on between here and the county, here in Sacramento. Our city council members spend a lot of time up in Sacramento having these conversations, working on different issues, doing the same thing with SCAG, and then we have other people in other organizations like Commissioner Ruiz, who is representing realtors with trying to solve some of these, these problems. So it's not something that the city is doing, doing alone, but I think we are doing, you know, our, our part. But there are, there are big problems, and we need, we need to solve them. So with that, unless there's any other comments, I would...
I just have one question before you make a motion, and it's really just a point of clarification. So we have safety element, housing element, and then two proposals that were presented. Are we taking those as one item?
Yes, so these would all be as one item that you're making a motion on with the two additional policy considerations for staff to work on for the city council recommendation.
Okay.
So I would move that we approve the motion or approve the, the presentations as, as stated, so...
With the two new policies?
With the two new policies, right.
Okay. I'll second it. Second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a unanimous decision? I would have voted or would have preferred to look at those two extra policies, but they're, you know, I said my two, my two cents worth on that. One of the things I did want to mention before we move on to the next item is brick and mortar, stores, businesses, people that employ people so they can live here. COVID has taken such a toll on the business community, just take a walk through the, to the buildings, and I think the future holds great opportunity for us in this particular arena, the housing. And even though we can't really jump at it right now, I can tell you my personal involvement over the next however long I'm on this will be to try to focus on what we can do to maybe not necessarily keep those businesses in, or those two, those areas in businesses, but have a mixed use so that we can have more of an old-town situation where we have living facilities, affordable housing, and also commercials at the same time. People can walk and that type of thing. So it's a big, big bite, bite off right now because everybody's in the same boat. Businesses are, everything's online practically now, so we do have to start worrying about those, how are you going to make money to even live at this point if, if we don't have the businesses to support anyone? So if you have ideas on that, please forward them to the city because I think those are great opportunities. The Target Shopping Center in particular, it's almost completely empty in the back, and there's a lot of room there. So any enterprising developers out there, I'm sure the city would be open to start talking about plans that, that would include mixed use on those. So that's my last two cents on that. We will move on to the next item. We're going to combine the next two items, item three and four, into one. So there will be a presentation on that, but it'll be presented as one, and then we will tackle the issue as one. Okay, very good. So with that, we'll move on to item number three, planning application number PA 21-0507, home product review for planning area 17B of the Roropa Ranch specific plan to allow for three unique detached, single-family plans with three architectural styles consisting of 35 lots. Second item is item number four, planning application number PA 21-0508, home product review for planning area 18B, as opposed to 17B, of the Roropa Ranch specific plan to allow for three unique detached, single-family plans with three architectural styles consisting of 27 lots. Staff report, Mr. Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and planning commissioners. As the chairperson stated, this is Somers Bend Home Product Review for PA 17B and 18B, which are planning applications 210507 and 210508. Project description, as is already previously stated, is planning area 17A is three unique plans with three architectural styles consisting of 35 lots. Planning area 18B, again, is three unique plans with three architectural styles consisting of 27 lots. It's a total of 62 lots. Something just to bring up is this, these architecture has been previously approved by the planning commission. It's the final tract of the Richmond American portion of Somers Bend. They previously used this architecture in planning area 16B, which is directly next door. The only difference in the architecture is they did do some different colors, just so you don't have the same colors in three planning areas in a row, so it'll look a little bit different if you're out there driving around. Project history, something we kind of like to do every time we do one of these presentations, is since 2017, the planning commission has approved or recommended for approval a general plan amendment, two specific plan amendments, five tentative track maps for a total of 1,071 single-family lots, a park-and-ride that also involves a trailhead, two private recreation centers, 15 home product reviews before tonight, which was for 796 homes, plus the 62 homes that we're talking about tonight. And then we also have the 374 multifamily units, which is referred to as the density core project out at Somers Bend. This, of course, is the entire Somers Bend development, showing you where planning area 17B is, and then directly next door is planning area 18B. So this is an aerial, not too long ago of the development, this is if you're looking west, and then this area shows where 17B is and where 18B is as part of the development. Again, planning area 17B is 35 lots. It's 1,943 square feet to 2,949 square-foot homes. There is a square-foot lot minimum of 5,000 square feet, and again, three floor plans and three architectural styles. For 18B, much of the same, except 27 lots, eight less lots, the exact same square-foot homes as is used in the same plans between the two planning areas, the 5,000 square-foot minimum lot size, and again, the same three-floor plans and architectural styles. Terms of the elevations, these are your Plan 1, it's a single-story product. On the American farmhouse, they're in the top left, some of the architectural elements are, you see the vertical windows and the flat, smooth concrete roof tiles. Moving on, or you also have the horizontal siding, which is very indicative of American farmhouse architecture. Moving on to the prairie, you have a covered entrance that involves brick columns along with a hip-style roof. And then finally, moving on to craftsmen, also has the hip roof, outlookers, and then columns with a stone base. Now, we do have enhanced elevations in here, which will occur if you are backing on to Somers Bend. So if you're driving on Somers Bend, you're not seeing just the same boring architecture that you're going to see throughout, have a little bit more gingerbread or architectural elements in there. And also, if you have a corner house on the interior, you're also having an enhanced architectural style. So this would be a standard rear house, this would be the enhanced, and it shows the horizontal siding and then the, the windows. So a lot of the commonalities here on the enhanced are the windows, when you have the divided light architectural elements. And then on the side, again, in the standard, and then the enhanced, again, with the windows. As we move through the Plan 2, not necessarily calling out all the architectural styles or the elements, but in the American farmhouse in the top left, you do have the very, the very traditional front porch that is, that is enclosed with the railing. Again, on the prairie, on the right, you have the stone, and then on the craftsmen, you have the, the siding and the stone base large column, which is very indicative of a craftsman architectural style. Plan 2 also does have enhanced elevations, it's a two-story product, so you have the standard, and then again, with the windows and, and the top portion, and the windows on the, on the first floor. And the standard, and then on this one, on the, on the left, you have a shingle element, and then again, all the windows do have the divided light. As we moved on to Plan 3, which is the final elevation, very, very similar callouts for, again, for the farmhouse, you do have the, the garage doors, the shutters on the front, the horizontal siding. For the prairie, again, you have the covered porch, porch entrance, the brick, and then on the craftsmen, again, is the very indicative front portion of the building. As we discussed, again, with enhanced elevations, the standard, and then the enhanced, and then on the rear, the standard and the enhanced. This would be the typical front elevation street scene if you were driving into the interior of the project. And then as we were talking about with the rear enhanced street scene, so this is planning area 17B, Somers Bend is on the bottom of the screen, this shows the elevate, the location of the enhanced elevations, and then this is what the view would look like along Somers Bend, so you can see all the architectural elements that are enhanced there. And then finally, on 18B, this is 18B, again, Somers Bend is on the bottom of the screen, this shows the location of the enhanced elevations, and then that would be the view of the Somers Bend enhanced elevations. We do have one little difference in this compared to the presentation that you saw two weeks ago when Jaime was presenting. There is an architecture forward requirement in here. So the definition of architecture forward in the specific plan is advancing, advancing the living space forward on the lot while recessing the garage a minimum of 15 feet behind the living space to ensure that garages do not dominate the street scene. So here's an example... So here's an example straight out of the specific plan of what that looks like. So you have your front of the living space, and then you have the garage, which is recessed. So if you're driving down Interior Street, you're not just having garages that are fronted on proper. You're going to have some deviation. Some will have garages up front, but most will have living space. The specific plan does require, in these two planning areas for 50% of the homes in both the planning areas, to have architectural forward elements. There's also an allowance within the specific plan that gives the planning commission, on recommendation of the Director of Community Development, which we do have that recommendation, the ability to reduce the percentage required of architecture-forward homes. And that is based on a finding that alternative architectural enhancements are proposed that minimize the garage dominating the street scene. So the reduction in these two planning areas in architectural forward homes will allow for a stable and marketable mix of floor plans that are successful in other planning areas. What Richmond Ameri-- and Edgar can speak to it a little bit later, but what Richmond American did is in planning area 16B, they had four floor plans and three architectural styles. Obviously, not all four floor plans always sell the best. They chose the three best marketable floor plans that are selling the best, moved those three over to this. There's less lots in these planning areas compared to the first one. So they were a little bit low that 50%. I believe they're at 46% and 43%, but still to allow us to get that nice mix through the property, we're making the finding that would allow for there to be less than a 50% architecture forward. In addition to that, one of the other plans still does have the architecture forward, but it's eight feet behind the living space, not 15. So there still is not going to have garages all along the street. It's just not always going to be 15. It will be eight instead of 15. In terms of environmental, this is a section 15162, which is for subsequent EIRs and negative declaration, which basically means that the project is consistent with the previously adopted Aurora Paw Ranch Environment Impact Report and all the subsequent addendums to that report. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm here for questions, and the representative from Richmond American is here for questions as well.
Thank you, Chairman Watts. So just going back to the architecture forward, it was just 16B that would fall below the 15% or it's both?
Both the 17B and 18B, and I do have one slide that I can show with this as well. So in planning area 17B, it provides 16, 15 recessed homes, which is 46%. And then only 26% of those homes within the planning area would have that garage forward because I talked about how there was the eight-foot one also. And then 18B, it provides 12, which is 44%, and then only 30% of the homes would have the garage forward. So it is 17B and 18B. I believe in planning area 17B, they're only short by one home, and then in 18B, they're short by two homes.
By two homes.
So it's not, we obviously wouldn't be bringing this recommendation forward if it was like 20%, but, you know, we worked with them to get as high as we could get.
Okay. I just want a clarification if we're looking at both, so I appreciate that. And then the color scheme, the architecture was previously approved. Color scheme is a little bit different here, but not drastically different from what's previously been approved?
Correct. We just, we kind of made an agreement with Richmond American that if they wanted to bring forward the same architecture, to have three planning areas in a row of the same architecture, that we wanted to see a slight change in color variation.
Okay, but it's not a massively different color, just, you know, driving through one palette to a completely different palette or something like that?
No, we wouldn't do that.
Just clarifying. Thank you.
And we have samples back here, correct?
Correct.
For Commissioner to review.
Commissioner Telesio.
I know, I'll wait.
Did I close the public hearing yet?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry, we would be opening it now to, oh, but there's another question from Commissioner Hagel.
Right.
Just one question. The enhanced architecture, that's, all the houses that are on Somers Bend on that road are going to have it. Is any of that, any of the other homes on the inside going to have it?
If you have a corner home, then that side will be an enhanced elevation.
Okay.
So obviously, it wouldn't be a rear because you're going to be a rear on, a rear or a rear onto open space, an area that will never, you'll never have a road behind.
Right, okay. All right, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
We received a request to speak from Dario Bianchi, but I believe he's exited the chambers.
We'll give him a chance in case he's here. Mr. Bianchi, still here? All right, I'll give it a chance.
I do want to, can we put this slide back up? I did forget one slide for the recommendation, kind of an important slide. So the staff does recommend that the planning commission approve PA 210507 and 210508, subject to the conditions of approval. Conditions of approval have been provided to Richmond American. They have no objections to those conditions.
And we want to make sure you have the opportunity to say anything. Do you care to come up and speak?
Edgar Gohman, Representative of Richmond American Homes. I just want to thank Mr. Scott Cooper for working with us, and I want to thank you commissioners for your time this evening and letting us continue to build here in the city of Temecula. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have new commissioners, so we want to make sure they have a chance to ask any questions if they want, so. With that, I will close the public hearing and discuss or move a motion if we want.
I don't want to take anyone's discussion, but if we're done with that, then I would move staff's recommendation.
And can I augment that? So there is a requirement that we make a specific finding regarding the reduction of the architectural forward homes, and so we would want to just put that on the record in addition to the motion to approve staff's recommendation to adopt the resolutions. We also want to just have on the record the finding that the required percentage of architectural forward homes isn't required in this case, that 15% isn't required because the architectural enhancements proposed minimize the garage dominating the street scene. So we want that to be an additional portion of the, what's part of the motion tonight.
Can I move staff's recommendation with the additional verbiage?
What she said?
Yes.
I feel like I should say something about the colors since one of our commissioners who specializes in colors is not here, but I think the color palette is great, so.
Okay, very good. We do have a motion by Commissioner Ruiz that has everything in it I think we need, and I'm getting an affirmative nod from our attorney. So with that, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Hagel, and we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's a four to zero vote, unanimous. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Edgar. And we move on to commissioner reports. I'll go to the left this time. Commissioner Hagel, you have anything to report or say anything?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Telesio.
I have a question. As soon as somebody punches my on button.
You're on.
Thank you. We've been discussing affordable housing, and it comes up all the time, the term itself. Would it be improper or to ask, I think it's public information, maybe a sampling of the expected sale prices for some of these homes? So we know what is expected, what is, basically what affordable housing is to some people, but not on, not every, not every motion or movement or packet that we have that comes through, but every once in a while, be able to ask that. First of all, is it legal to do that? I would think it's public information that in this situation, we could ask or request that they provide that information.
Sure, I don't see a problem with that, especially because for our housing element in order, I mean, there's essentially determine the market, I'm sorry, you determine what the...
Intended.
Intended amount is based on the density, but I don't think we could, there's a problem necessarily with asking. I mean, it does become ultimately public information when they start marketing it, but if you have something to add...
I was just going to say, and Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but in my experience, affordable housing or workforce housing is not derived on the sale price of it, but on the income for the applicant or the owner coming in. And there's been some difference in reference to AMI, whether it be 120, 140, 80. So maybe that could be clarified if we're looking at something, but in my experience, the affordable housing or workforce housing is not defined by the actual sales price or what you might be able to get from that.
But just when we see a project come in and review it and we prove it or not, we have no idea what the prices are in the area unless we find another outlet for that. And that is, once they start to build, of course, or sell, then we know to the sales agency. But before that, I don't have an idea. When I look at a house that's been presented here as part of a package of building, what that house sells for, what is affordable, not that I put the price together with it, but that's what is the intended direction that we're going in housing prices.
Commissioner Telesio, I think we can look into that further. There may be some desire from the private development community to retain, you know, that those prices will be for confidentiality purposes and market considerations, but like Marissa said, we can ask to present it, and then we can always ask during the hearing if they want to present that as well. But there may be some desire to maintain confidentiality before it hits the market.
Until it becomes public.
Exactly. They may not want to disclose to competitors exactly what the price will be until they're ready to do it. But we can explore it tomorrow and see what we can do on that.
Just an idea.
It's also very dynamic, too. I mean, if you look at just this last two months, I'll bet, you know, the prices have changed quite a bit.
Lumber considerations, all those things, you know, they may present something here, and then lumber, you know, quadruples and maybe a different price.
Typically, just to point out, and you well know, when we hear a proposal, it's significant lag time before that actually gets implemented, and you all can see what happens with prices. So a good point, but it's a little squishy, I think.
If a project is affordable, though, generally, we will, there will be an affordability covenant included as part of that project, and so you would know at that point, not necessarily what the actual price is, but kind of what percentage will be affordable and what the, you know, whether it's 80% AMI or something else. So that would be included as part of staff's presentation.
Thank you. Anything else, John?
No.
Okay, great. Community, I don't have any report.
I just had one, and because I'm going to be attending my first, one of my newly assigned subcommittee meetings next week, but I will not be present for the next planning commission meeting. So if that would normally be reported back, then I'm just hoping Commissioner Hagel can fill in for me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Community Development Director report.
Deputy Director Watson sends his regards. He wished he could have been here tonight. I know he's been thanking the planning commission for all your hard work on the subcommittees. We've been sending you all sorts of meeting requests, and it's going to keep a very quick clip for the next few years, I imagine. So I know he sends his thanks for that. Mr. Cooper does have some information to share as well.
Just a reminder that there is the Somers Bend tour tomorrow. Assume you guys know where the trailer is, right next to the fire station, so look for Trent out there. I think the plan is to get you guys on some of the vehicles and get you out to the main rec center, and then through some of the models, and then touring the streets and any other requests that you guys have. I'm sure they'll be more than willing to accommodate the first two tour members.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Brandon. And I believe my favorite Dodger fans on deck.
Yeah, there you go.
For the Public Works, before I get into that, I'm piggybacking on Mr. Cooper's statement. I talked with Trent today. They're going to get you on the buggy, so dress appropriately. It's going to get dusty, so dress appropriately. For the Public Works Director, since this commission won't be getting back together for three weeks, just the way the calendar rolls till the beginning of October, the one thing we wanted to make you aware of is that they're going to begin to haul out sediment out of Myrieta Creek. So you're going to see quite a few trucks coming out and running a haul route to dump over near Cherry and Jefferson, that vacant lot that hopefully can someday be maybe a sports park. We're hoping for that. However, there will be trucks, so if you see that, that's what's going on, and that has to occur before we can open up the trails. So shortly after all that sediment's out, the trail system's going to be open to us.
So it's not going to be the tractor pull?
No, but you'll see a lot of sediment coming out.
Ron, don't mean to put you on the spot, but we did have a question on the Nez Road widening related to that one project near the duck pond. Could you comment just on that real quick?
Sure. As part of the conditions that the arrive at Rancho Highlands, the parcels that everybody was talking about next to the duck pond, they have been conditioned to widen through their frontage, so the Nez will expand to the four lanes that it should be per the general plan. So it's going to be widened on their side, and as far as that goes, we've also been in discussions with the developer to enter into an MOU in order to expand further to Rancho Vista. So they're going to explore obtaining those permits, and that way, that could become a city CIP project. That way, we can alleviate some of that traffic concern, at least in that area. I know there's other concerns that everyone has, but at least from the duck pond all the way up to Rancho Vista, that can be widened to accommodate that development coming in. And that way, you know, at least that's a step forward. So that's what we're working on currently with the developer.
Great. And just for the record, as far as I know, we have had no presentations at all on what's working, what's in the...
So I can speak to that one.
That's okay. Well, time is the right, I suppose, but go ahead.
Well, you're not going to see it. So that's, so it was developed on the affordable housing overlay zone, which the state put the requirements on the city, which eliminates any allowable-to-take projects forward to a planning commission or city council. It also eliminates any requirements for any sequel analysis. So the project went through two and a half, almost three years with staff, and ultimately was administratively approved. So it's 270 apartment units. Fifty-five of those units are affordable, built right adjacent to the duck pond on those parcels that people were discussing tonight.
Could we have updates on that when those things happen, so we're not caught completely in the dark?
I do believe that the deputy city manager is working on a update to provide to both the planning commission and city council on that.
Okay. Yeah, that would help. Okay, anything else, Ron?
That concludes my report.
Okay, very good. With that, I'd like to adjourn until our next meeting on October 6th here at City Council Chambers at 6:00. Everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
We stand adjourned.